So does Mayor have to take the seat?
You want me to read out the names of the people that are here?
There's publics?
No, it's not, just the panelists.
No, that's fine, as long as we have the two. Mayor, we'll start whenever you're ready.
Okay, it's hour clock.
Okay.
I'm meeting the order.
Cage is not here, or there is?
I can barely hear. Has anybody else had any trouble hearing?
Is that better?
Is that better?
That's a little bit better. I've got my mind all set up and I have to really focus on, on hearing.
How about now?
I've never been accused of not being heard.
I heard that!
Alright, obviously, I all heard that because you're all laughing at me. Okay, uh, well, Stan, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and we'll have a moment of silence in honor of our troops, our first responders. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, good evening, City Clerk, roll call please?
Mayor Pro Tim Bedencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Cardio?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
He told me that he was already committed for a job when this was called.
Thank you, and Councilmember Loa?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Move to excuse, uh, Councilmember Bishop.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Um, if you wish to speak to the City Council on items listed or not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council, now would be the time. Um, consent calendar, or, um, anything that's upcoming on, uh, item six. IT, we have anybody in the queue?
There are no hands at this moment.
Okay, City Clerk, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, and seeing nobody in the audience, we'll close the public hearing at this time, public comment at this time. Uh, consent calendar, uh, resolution by the city, uh, well, who's this? Mr. King, that's yours. I'm taking your script away from you there.
Okay, uh, item number five point one is to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty-one dash zero nine zero. Uh, resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the issuance of, of the Californian Municipal Financing Authority, commonly known as CMFA, of multi-family housing revenue bonds for not to exceed thirty million dollars, uh, for the, uh, multi-family units, um, located at the corner of Fifty Second Street East and Palmdale Boulevard. Um, I was explaining this to Mr. Loa earlier. This is the item, uh, we actually, uh, brought in at last council meeting, but because we use incorrect agency name, uh, we're asking you to approve this, uh, uh, for this meeting. Uh, typically, uh, developer actually, uh, is issuing the bonds, uh, through a state agency called CMFA, and they're the one actually issuing the bond, carrying the bonds for them, just like city would be doing for our CFD. Uh, so it's not a city's obligation. Um, it's simply, uh, city is acting as, as an authorizing body to allow this particular transaction to happen. Uh, and, and the developer typically uses, uh, uh, CMFA as, as a, a issuing agency, uh, for, for issuing the bonds.
Right, so, basically, um, we have to have the hearing because it's within our corporate limits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item?
Okay, so, um, as you've indicated, I mean, the city's, uh, not going to be liable for this bond, it'll be the CMFA.
Yes, sir.
It'll be their responsibility, uh, but we're, we're just doing it as a pass-through because it's in our tr- jurisdictional limits.
Correct.
Now, um, did we approve this item on Fifty Second Street and Palmdale Boulevard on Tuesday?
Um, I'm not sure if we did or not, but this is one of the three projects, um, that was, yes, on planning commission and, and other items. So I think, yes.
I mean, I recall we had a night on-
And a density bonus on this or something?
Yeah, the density bonus, for Fifty Second Street and this and Palmdale Boulevard.
Yeah, I can't keep track of all these different projects.
That, that was the one that, that the density bonus was approved on Tuesday?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes.
Alright.
This is a different project, I believe this is on Palmdale and Fifty Second.
Right.
Yes, Fifty Second.
So this has nothing to do with the, uh, density bonuses that were on the agenda last Tuesday, this is for a different project on Palmdale and Fifty Second, yes?
Okay.
I re- I recall if you did one of- Fifty Second, or was that a-
There was another project, uh, near the same, same vicinity by the same developer, but it was not on Fifty Second, so maybe you may be referring to the other one.
Right.
Yeah.
Sir, this was on the agenda, but remember, it got pulled, so that's why the Fifty-
It was on the agenda, but it got pulled, so that, that's why I have a question.
Right.
Because I, I-
It got, it got pulled because of the name, uh, the, the mess up on the name in this, in, in the report.
Oh, I, you know, I, I don't have, I think that, you know, we're in, we're within our bounds and our responsibility to, um, issue a, a density bonus, uh, to projects like this because we are in need of affordable housing, but it got pulled from the agenda the other night, and I'm wondering if we're adopting this tonight, have we, ha- does the public have a, missing an opportunity to weigh in on this issue?
So we actually had a public hearing, uh, uh, on the seventh, which is last week, so we presented-
It got pulled on the sev- on the-
Yeah, yeah, so, there are two different ways you can do, you can conduct a public hearing. The first, uh, at the City Council meeting, and the other way is at the staff level. Because there were a lot of items on the seventh council meeting, we actually conducted probably hearing, uh, through other means. Uh, so public had an opportunity to participate and-
This was noticed in-
Correct, it was properly noticed and, you know, the nor-
This is the one, is this the one that's the, um, houses with the ADUs, it's a rental product?
I don't have that detail, sir.
Okay, and nobody from the meetings here.
Right, yeah, right.
One, uh, I think that's the one, isn't it, that they're doing over there?
That is the one, Mr. Mayor, is Rabello, uh, one of the projects that they have in the city. Rabello currently has one in the construction on Avenue S and Sixty Fifth. This is a different project on Palmdale Boulevard and Fifty Second. The ones that, uh, we had on the September seventh council meeting for the density bonus agreements, those are different projects.
Okay.
This is a separate project completely.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just, I, I'm just wanting to make sure that anybody who wants to weigh in on these, because I know that there's an issue, uh, regarding affordable housing, uh, in these Palmdale, several people have raised that issue. I just want to make sure we're not doing an end run on anybody, uh, and, and everybody has had an opportunity to weigh in on these, uh, on these projects.
Okay, um, so, we need a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Do you have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I go with, um, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Nope, somebody's got, somebody's interrupted at work. Alright, so is that a motion approved, Mr. Loa?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, he's, he may be tied up here for a moment, we'll give him a minute. We good? Okay, so, uh, roll call, vote please?
Mayor Pro Tim Bedencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cardio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Houghawer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have a presentation.
Um, so, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, as you are aware of, uh, we recently refinanced two bonds, if you recall, uh, May and, um, and September. Uh, and there's a good chance, I think, we will issue the bonds again. So I thought it was important to provide information, uh, and also some, some level of training, uh, to everyone, so, just so we understand, uh, you know, the process and then why, why we are issuing the bonds. So let me introduce our, um, municipal advisor, Suzanne Harrell. And also joining us are two bond counsel, um, Brian Quint and Paul Timick. So I'm gonna ask Suzanne to take over the presentation. Suzanne?
Sure. Uh, good evening, everyone, um, we do have a presentation, I think your IT is going to, uh, load that up, but I just want to say, hi, it's nice to see you all again. Um, and, uh, so I will, um, uh, uh, we're going to talk tonight a little bit about the basics of debt issuance. As, uh, Keith mentioned, uh, Brian Quint, Frank Quinn, and Timick, uh, is joining me, um, and going to help out on a few slides. So if we can go to the first, uh, to the next slide. So, the, uh, the things that, uh, we'd like to talk to you about tonight are, you know, when do you use municipal bonds, what types of municipal bonds does the city issue? Who are the financing participants that help, that assist you in, in, uh, preparing the bond documents? Uh, Brian will talk a little bit about, um, the, the security documents for the bonds. Uh, we'll go through, uh, briefly go through the issuance process, um, the, the city's debt policy, uh, and then some, um, Brian will talk again about initial and continuing disclosure for bonds. And then at the end, I have, um, two charts that just have a list of the city's, um, existing debt and, you know, in case, uh, uh, any of the members have any questions about that that they would like to ask. So if we just want to go to the next slide. So the city basically has three ways to fund CIP or important, um, projects. Um, and that is to accumulate funds, um, over a period of time, uh, so that you can fund the project on a pay-as-you-go basis. You can apply for grants, um, specifically for particular projects, um, or you can borrow money, um, mostly, uh, by using municipal bonds. Um, and again, bonds are typically used for projects that have a long-term, uh, long useful life. So if you want to issue a bond with a payment term of thirty years, it's because the, the project that you're financing has a thirty-year useful life. Uh, so we can go to the next slide. And again, I would offer, if anybody has any questions as we go along, um, feel free to interrupt or raise your hand or, or anything, we can, or we can answer questions at the end. So, there's a few types of municipal bonds that you're fami- that you may be familiar with. One is a general obligation bond. Uh, cities don't typically use general obligation bonds, but you'll probably be familiar with these because of your school district, um, where they do a bond campaign and they issue bonds that are secured by a property tax levy, um, and they do get voter approval. Uh, the most common way for cities to borrow money, um, for projects that are payable from their general fund are to issue lease revenue bonds. And the lease payments, which we'll discuss in a moment, um, are, uh, are subject to annual appropriation, uh, by the city council, and that is in order to comply with the state constitution, um, relating to debt limitations, um, by cities. And, um, you can and have allocated the debt service on some of your lease revenue bonds, uh, internally to other funds, but the obligation remains, uh, an obligation to be paid by the general fund. Then there are several types of revenue bonds the city, um, has issued, and these are bonds that are paid from legally restricted revenues where there's some statutory authority, um, to pledge certain revenues outside of the general fund to specific debt. And those are things like tax allocation bonds that were issued, you know, by the former redevelopment agency and now by the, your successor agency. Special tax bonds issued by a variety of, uh, community facilities, districts, or CFDs. And then housing bonds, um, you actually, your housing authority has actually issued multi-family housing revenue bonds. Um, and so you have, uh, uh, all three of these, uh, types of revenue bonds. So I think we can go to the next slide. So I put this diagram up just to kind of show you, since the most important debt to the city is typically the general, you know, debt, um, that the general fund is responsible to pay for. And again, um, in order to comply with the state statutes and, and limitations on debt, um, we use a process, uh, where we lease and lease back an asset using the city's financing authority. So Palmdale has created a, um, a financing authority that entity leases a site and facility, so we have an asset leased back to the city, and the city makes lease payments to the financing authority, and that's how the financing authority secures, uh, the payment of debt service on the bonds. How I think we can go to the next slide. Uh, and there's two ways that you can issue municipal bonds or sell municipal bonds. And one is kind of probably what you're most familiar with, which is a public sale of the bonds. And those are sold to the general public and institutional investors and mutual funds. Um, the security is described in an official statement that kind of talks about, um, you know, uh, what, uh, what revenues are available, uh, for the payment, the purpose of the bonds, uh, and all of the bondholders' rights. Um, the most recent public sale of bonds that the city of Palmdale has issued, um, was in two thousand nine. You did a, um, a refunding of some special tax bonds for the Anaverty CFD. And then in twenty seventeen, you did a refinancing of some of your general fund obligations, um, by issuing lease revenue bonds. Um, another way, uh, that the city's taken advantage of recently, um, to sell bonds is through what's called a private placement. And that's, uh, and it's called private placement because you're not working with the general public, you're working directly with a private lender or an investor, um, and you're negotiating terms with them directly. There's no official statement or, or disclosure prepared, although you can agree to provide the lender with annual, um, financial information. Um, and these are usually used, um, in a couple of circumstances. One, time is of the essence. You, you may remember in the spring when we were working on your refunding of your two thousand seven certificates of participation, and the Trade and Commerce Center, CFD, um, you know, the interest rates were kind of, were really starting to take off, and we wanted to make sure that we got into the market and got those refinancings done before, uh, market conditions changed too much. Um, another, uh, reason to do a private placement of bonds is when there's complicated or unusual security. So in the case of the refunding of the two thousand seven bonds, that was all vacant land, which is highly unusual in this, in this day and age for, uh, as the least asset security for a lease revenue bond. Um, and in the Trade and Commerce Center, there were very few, um, property owners, uh, so it was not, the, the property ownership was very concentrated, and you did have, um, several delinquencies. And then need for special conditions is another reason why you would do a private placement. In the case of the CFD, in, of the, the two thousand seven, uh, COP refunding, you know, you wanted the ability to pay off those bonds if you ever sold any of that vacant land. Um, and it was less expensive. The one investor offered you, uh, prepayment conditions that were, um, that were more favorable than you would have gotten in the, in the public markets at the time. So I think, uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, so this just is a brief, um, uh, overview of who's involved in the financing. The city hires a bond counsel, so again, we have Brian Quint, and you probably have all met Paul Timick also, um, his partner. Um, uh, they're your bond counsel firm, they draft the legal documents, um, that describe the security for the bonds, if the bonds are going to be tax exempt, they give an opinion that the, that you've met all the requirements for tax exemption, and they also give an opinion that the bonds are legal, valid, and binding obligations of the city. Uh, the municipal advisor, that's me, um, as your financial advisor, I provide advice on the structure, the timing, the terms of the bond, should you, um, do a public sale, should you do a private placement? Um, and as your financial advisor, I'm subject to a fiduciary duty to the city, which means I need to put your interests, um, ahead of my own. Um, you also, on a, on a bond transaction, have a disclosure counsel. Um, they review the preliminary official statement, assist you to just make sure all the facts that are material to an investor are disclosed. Um, and then an underwriter, um, this is a firm that kind of acts as a go-between, between the city and, um, the investors, so they buy the bonds from you and they sell the bonds to the investors. So I think the next slide, I'm gonna turn it over, we advance, I'm gonna turn this over now to Brian Quint, uh, for this slide and the next, to walk you through, um, some of the general, uh, documents that you see, um, in a bond issue. Brian?
Thank you, Suzanne, good evening, everyone. Uh, the security documents are those documents that, that describe the underlying security or the payment provisions or the source of payment for the particular bond, uh, transaction. So the indenture would be between the city and a, usually a trustee bank, and the trustee bank would be, uh, the source of collecting, uh, the payments from the city, and then with the obligation to pay those to the bondholders, uh, to pay debt service on the bonds. As you know, that the investors are paying money upfront, uh, on a bond issue with the, uh, understanding and the promise by the city that they'll get paid over time with interest. And the indenture, um, generally provides those provisions. It also has, uh, provisions relating to default, we never, we, we never expect to get, to use those. And u- usually, the, uh, the documents provide for the ability of the city to pay early. Uh, particularly now, you've seen Suzanne mention, the last couple of years, we've done refinancings for the city where interest rates have declined and you can refinance the bonds like you would refinance a, a home mortgage and save some money. So these, the indenture would include, uh, provisions for, um, the prepayment of those bonds. Um, if we did a lease financing, the lease agreement, uh, this is an obligation of the city's general fund, and because the lease, uh, generally provides for lease and leaseback of, of assets or, or buildings of the city, it also has provisions relating to the maintenance of those, those buildings, also the, the procuring of insurance and other, uh, obligations of the city to maintain the property. Uh, Suzanne, I mentioned briefly the, uh, official statement or the offering document, this is similar to a stock prospectus, and this is the document that's provided to the prospective investors in the bonds to let them know what they're buying, who the issuer is, what the security is, what the source of payment is. Um, also, uh, it gives them descriptions of the legal documents, and it also provides a, a bunch of information about the city, about the city's financing, uh, finances, uh, and it provides any, all, what we, what we try to accomplish in the official statement is to provide for, uh, all the information that an investor would want to know or need to know in order to make an educated decision to, to invest in the city's bond. So, we try to make that as complete as possible, and it also, there are certain risks that are, that are applicable, pardon me, to a bond issue, and we try to, um, give the investor all of that information so they're making, as I said, an educated decision on the purchase. I think we go to the next slide. Um, also, continuing on with the documents, a bond purchase agreement is the agreement that's between the underwriter. As Suzanne mentioned, what normally happens is an underwriter will buy the bonds at a discount and will, if you will, sell them at retail, so that's how they make their, their profit. They will buy the bonds from the city and then they will sell them to their customers. And that, the difference between the, if you will, the wholesale price and the retail price is the, is from, is the, the, the compensation to the underwriter. And that's a standard way that these bonds, municipal bonds are sold. Uh, there's a continuing disclosure agreement, so there is now an obligation for the city to provide information to the marketplace whenever they issue bonds. As you might imagine, a, a city that would issue, uh, a, say, a twenty or twenty-five year, year bond, that bond is going to be out in the marketplace for that period of time, and these are freely trans- transferable between investors. If you wa- bought a bond and you decided that you needed to cash out, it could be sold to another investor. The continuing disclosure agreement provides an opportunity or obligation, I should say, for the city to provide information to the marketplace where those investors that are buying bonds in the secondary market have a place to go, uh, to always have updated and current information about the city. So there's an obligation of the city to file, uh, its audited financial statements every year. There's certain other information that relates to the particular bond issue, what the security for that bond issue is provided annually. And also, the city is an obligation to let the market know if there's been a problem, if there was a, the fault or if there was a reserve fund draw, or there was a problem with a tax exemption. This continuing disclosure agreement provides that information to the marketplace, so they always have a com- a, a consistent and updated, uh, picture of the city's finances.
And you can also, um, provide, uh, good information under the continuing disclosure, like if the city gets a credit rating upgrade, so it's not all bad. So if you were to get a credit rating upgrade, you would also post the, your goal.
The idea is to keep the city's information current, whether it's- The idea is to keep the city's information current, whether it's, whether it's good or whether it's not good or it's just an obligation to provide current information.
Thanks. We can go to the next slide now. So briefly, I'm going to describe the issuance process. So first you engage the financing professionals. So your financing team kind of talks to the city staff, finds out what your objectives are and comes up with a debt structure to meet those goals of the city. And then once that's determined, then the documents relating to the particular bond issue are presented to the city council and the city council approves the form of those security documents. At that time, you set the parameters for the bond sale. So not to exceed principal amount and not exceed interest rate. And then you delegate the authority to issue the bonds later, so to the staff, so long as the parameters are not exceeded. And then during this time, the staff and the financing professionals go through a due diligence process. And that's the process where we, we try to make sure that we have determined all of the material facts that, that a bondholder would want to know. If there's anything, you know, that's, if your audit hasn't, you know, it's, it's been a year and a half since the audit is issued. So we don't have a, a most recent audit. We want to make sure that we talk to the staff and see if there's anything that's happened since that time that we don't know about, that a bondholder would want to know about. At this point, we're also meeting with the credit rating agencies like S and P. And once we have that rating, the underwriter can then start to market the bonds to the investors. And once they, that usually takes about a week. Once they're done with their marketing effort, we, the city signs a bond purchase agreement. And that is the time where we actually lock in the interest rate. So up until that time, the interest rates are subject to change with market conditions. Once you sign the bond purchase agreement, that shifts the interest rate risk from you to the underwriter. So if anything happens to interest rates after the underwriter signs that agreement, that's their responsibility and, and, and not the city's. And then a few weeks later, we have a bond closing and the funds are transferred back and forth. So we'll go to the next slide. So in 2016, the state legislature adopted a law to require all cities issuing debt to have a debt policy. So the city of Palmdale adopted a debt policy. It includes the purpose of the policy. It includes the types of debt that the city expects to issue. It includes a criteria for refinancing debt. You know, how, how much savings are required before you go through this process? Because as I mentioned before, interest rates can change during the financing process. It's usually 60 to 90 days long. And so you want to make sure you're starting with a high enough percentage of savings so that by the time you get to the re, to locking in the interest rates, you're meeting those goals. The policy also includes information about the CIP and the budget and policy goals. And one of the other big things that the debt policy includes is internal control procedures for compliance. And those are, there's three compliance areas. One is the continuing disclosure compliance that Brian Quint mentioned. The second is the state has certain annual reporting requirements. And so there's compliance with the state reporting. And then third, the IRS has certain compliance requirements for tax exempt bonds. And so your debt policy requires you to comply with all three of those areas. So now we can go to the next slide. And I think that's for Brian to talk a little bit more about continuing disclosure.
Yeah, thank you Suzanne. And I think I have covered a bunch of this. So the official statement is the document that is provided at the time of bond issuance. And it's determined that, that we need the city to certify at the time that, that, that official statement is out into the marketplace, that it's materially accurate, there's no misstatements in there. And we want this, the city to be comfortable that all the information that's necessary for an investor to make a great decision to purchase the bonds is included in the official statement. And then as I mentioned earlier, the continuing disclosure agreement requires the city to provide this annual or ongoing financial information, which of course varies by the type of issue. If it's a CFD, then it would be information that's related to the CFD and the ownership and the values. If it's a lease financing, it would be the, the, the generally more about the general funds obligations. And there's also, we mentioned, there's information that needs to be provided to the marketplace, the significant events. And that, if there's information, again, anything that is of significance to the marketplace about the city, about the bonds, about the financing, we would want to provide that information to the marketplace, good or bad. But that's the, that's why we have a continuing obligation to provide this information. And there's a, there's a website that's maintained by the municipal securities, MSR Regulatory Board, that we, that's posted annually. And that is where the information is available for the, for, for all of the market participants.
So again, this first bullet point here, the official statement free from material misstatement. You know, I mentioned a little while ago that during the bond issuance process, we go through a due diligence process. And that due diligence process is, is our, our way of making sure that we haven't missed anything that an investor might want to know in the initial, in the initial disclosure. So I think if we go to the next slide, now I've listed, I know it's probably hard for you guys to read on your screens, but I've listed outstanding debt of the city. And this slide just relates to the general funds obligations. And you can see that you have a variety of lease revenue bonds and lease agreements. So you've done a combination of public sale and private placement over time. But what I really wanted you to see was kind of the, the projects that you financed. One was the courthouse. One was Marie Kerr and the Eastside Parks. You did some major street improvements in 2002 and 2004. And you refinanced that obligation. You did a streetlight acquisition project. You acquired a building for your, to store your records a couple of years ago. And then most recently, we just refinanced that 640 acre acquisition. And then the next slide is, just shows the other obligations of the city, the debt that the city has issued. These are not secured by the general fund at all. The successor agency has some tax allocation bonds secured by the former tax increment. You have some special tax bonds secured by special taxes of the CFDs like Anna Verdi Trade and Commerce Center. And then you have, the city also has a home loan and a section 108 head loan, which is secured by CDBG allocations. So, but I just wanted to kind of give you over these two slides, kind of a, a quick look overview about what kind of debt that the city has issued in the past. And in case you had any questions about that. And so that, if we go to the next slide, that, that concludes the presentation. But we're happy to answer any questions or do any follow-up on any of the information tonight.
Thank you ma'am. Can we make sure that this presentation is made available to our public members on the audit committee? And the other agencies or boards that have anything where they touch this issue at all? So they can get, get that. And also, I'd like to get a follow-up to this because that, those, those, those debt, types of debt are interesting. Can we have the amounts of those in there and what we're obligated to on an annual basis? I think those are the two numbers I think that'd be interested.
Yeah, I, I wrote the same thing down on my notes in, in two locations. So that makes sense if, if we can just, we'll have staff redo this to include the, the annual allocation and the debt total.
All right Laura, do you have anything?
The two charts with just those two columns added.
Yeah, I think that that's.
Everyone on the council, he'll distribute all those.
I'm not going to distribute until those are added because I think there's value in listing those. And then we'll send them out to all the boards and committees.
Okay. Ms. Benton Court, did you have anything to add or inquire?
What was the only one I had too was the amounts.
Okay, great. All right, two, thank you. Mr. Creo?
Can you go to the previous page, the previous slide, please? The Sierra Gateway, Ritter Ranch, Goodie Hills and Anna Verdi Trade and Commerce, how come those don't have a maturity date?
Let's see. I'm sorry, I left that out. But the Ritter, the Ritter Ranch is, I think it has just a couple of years left, but those bonds are in default. And then the Sierra Gateway, I believe, I, I don't, I believe those bonds are also in default.
So Sierra Gateway has matured back in 2016 without the bonds being paid off. It was in default from the start. So the city has worked with LA County to come up with a plan to dissolve the district. And back in 2016, we had a meeting of mine as to what the allocation percentage, because the county also had CFD for the same parcels. So we, we started having this conversation about a month ago or so, again, to understand what we need to do to get to the resolution. So that's CFD 90, 90 dash, 91 dash one, which is Sierra Gateway.
All right, can we, can we get those blanks filled in on the new, new and approved version of this?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Law?
Yeah, this is all very fascinating. In the issuance process, it occurs to me that this entire presentation, and I understand it's just an overview and kind of a thumbnail sketch of, of the entire thing. But what I see is missing in here is what all of this costs the city. I mean, all of this engaging with professionals and preparing security documents and due diligence and all the rest of these things, somebody's got to pay for all of this. What's the cost involved in issuing these bonds to the city?
Suzanne, maybe if I can share the generality first, maybe she can get into a little more specific. Usually, we go through the fiscal analysis first. What is a savings to the city in interest savings? And that saving has to be a lot greater than the cost of issuing the bonds. So typically, we've seen somewhere between $150,000 to $200,000 cost of issuance, depending on the size of the bonds. But the savings has, has to be in millions to, to justify the type of transaction we're going through. So definitely, if it's too close, we wouldn't even do it in the first place because it doesn't make sense. So it depends on the, the complexity of the deal. Also whether or not it's a public sales or a private placement, interest rate at that point. So we all go through that, the analysis as part of the determining factor. You know, should we do it? And if we're going to do it, then how much savings are we going to achieve at what cost? So we definitely go.
Are you talking about when you're refinancing bonds or when you're issuing new ones?
Both. But, but, but there are two different purposes. So for reissuance of the bond, refunding is commonly what they call is to save the, the long-term payments of the remaining period.
Okay, that's easy.
That's easy, right.
New issuance, what does it cost the city?
Sir, I, I just want to tell you, like, we get in touch with, by contact, by developers. There was one just last week who wants to build out a housing tract, wants us to establish a CFD to do that. So what Keith's talking about is to go through that, there has to be a certain threshold. Like the amount of houses is usually no less than 200, right? So why there's a cost, there's a benefit because we don't have the expertise on staff, right? For, for all these attorneys and tax, tax advisors. So their costs are, are borne into the overall fiscal analysis that are paid by these developers. They're not paid by the city. It's part of this.
Is that wrapped, is that like wrapped, wrapped into the?
Deal.
So, so it's, it's like having your costs when you're purchasing a house, for example. And, and, and some of those things are wrapped into the loan amount. Is it, was that the same kind of thing? Just, I'm trying to get very rudimentary here.
So there's, there's two angles with a CFD. For instance, the developer costs on the typical housing tract, if they don't do a CFD, they make a fiscal determination if they're going to sell their lots for more or they're going to bear the costs. However, they're going to do that. If they do a CFD, what they're trying to do is long-term have the homeowners pay that so they get the money upfront to put the infrastructure in. So you understand there are some CFDs in this community, Anna Verdi and some of the other ones. So as we're getting approached by this, we, we try to, and, and I could just talk to one recently, to do the fiscal analysis, we're going to ask these developers, like, hey, you, you have to give us the money to have this fiscal analysis done before we even will, will go down that path. I mean, we'll meet with them, we'll talk, we'll go over the rules and regulations, but we're not going to spend city money in the hopes that they're going to go down this. So.
No, I understand that one too. What I'm referring to are the issuance of bonds because we want to do infrastructure development in the city, such as developing roadways or sewer system or anything like that. That doesn't involve a developer and doesn't, and it's not a refi of previously issued bonds. What is the cost of those type of bonds?
So maybe Suzanne can probably give you rough estimate, the range of the cost.
I mean, is it, is it based on percentages, commissions, things of that sort?
Probably a lot of fixed costs.
So there, there is a, a portion of the costs are, are fixed and a portion are variable and vary with the size of the issue. So, you know, when Brian was talking a little bit earlier about the bond purchase agreement and how, and the underwriter, you know, they usually get paid as a percentage of the bonds and they get paid from, from the bond proceeds.
So if we issue a, let's say a $50 million bond for, we want to develop sewer systems or, or improve sewer systems or something of that sort, what is the usual percentage that is being paid to obtain these bonds?
So the percentage that an underwriter gets compensated is based on a couple of things. I'm trying not to overly complicate it on our, on our, on our call tonight, but it's based on a couple of things. One is the length, the maturity of the bond. So the longer the bonds are outstanding, the more the underwriter gets compensated because typically the bonds that are 30 years require a little bit more effort to sell to investors than the bonds that mature in a year, two years or three years. So that's one thing. The second thing is the credit rating. So not all bonds have the same credit rating. The city's credit rating is different than saying, you know, the sewer project revenue credit rating or the CFDs, which don't typically have a rating at all. So depending on the, the credit rating, that affects the underwriter's compensation. And then, and then the size. So if you were having, if you had a general fund with a, your general fund lease with an A plus credit rating for $10 million, you know, the underwriter might get compensated, you know, half a percent. So, and typically what we do is, as your financial advisor, I comb through all the other issues that are very similar to yours in terms of credit rating, size of maturity. You kind of make sure that the underwriter's fee for your issue is commensurate with the fees that other cities pay for the same service for the same type of, of issue. So unfortunately, it's not one size fits all. But that, that's the most variable expense. The other ones are pretty, pretty well fixed. You know, like the financial advisor fees is kind of fixed. I mean, they, they go up a little bit depending on the size. You have, sometimes you have a special tax consultant, you'll have a trustee, you'll have bond counsel. You might have a title report if it's a lease revenue bond. So it's very difficult to kind of generalize about what the. So it's very difficult to kind of generalize about what the percentages, because some of those costs don't change, whether it's $2 million or, you know, $30 million. But again, we do a thorough analysis of what the fees are relative to what other issuers are paying for the same services to make sure that your fees are, in general, reasonable. And again, in your case, most of the fees are paid from the proceeds of the bonds. So a lot of the the fees are contingent on the bonds actually closing so that the city doesn't have to come out of pocket. And as one of the council people said, if you're doing a CFE for a developer, you actually collect money from the developer in advance to pay for things like a fiscal impact report or appraisal or feasibility, you know, feasibility study in terms of market absorption rates and so forth for housing.
Okay, that's that's very good, I appreciate that explanation. On the variable fees, depending on the length and depending on, you know, comparison with other cities and so on and our rating, are those things negotiable or is it all sort of fixed and in place? For example, in real estate, it's usually a commission is around 5% or 6%, but it is at times negotiable. Do we have negotiated room here or is it always a kind of arms length and the bond issuer kind of imposes the amount that is going to cost the city?
Well, it is negotiable in terms of, you know, we look at, you know, in general, what other what underwriters are getting paid for similar services for a similar type issue. So typically, the city, for me, will will tell the underwriter what we feel is a reasonable compensation. They can ask for more, but they typically will not get more. And and there's a lot of data available through the state about what other issuers pay and, you know, for commensurate types of issues. So the data is all out there, so they can't really, you know, hold the wool over your eyes.
Okay, that's something that you keep your eye on for the city?
I do.
Okay. I really thank you for that, that's that's very good.
This is why I think maintaining the credit rating is so critical to the success of issuing the bonds. And and this is why I think finance continues to look to council members and mayor to to have healthy reserve because that's one of the key factors they look into.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Ms. Benton Court or Mr. Creo, anything else?
I don't have anything else, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I didn't hear it.
I I'm sorry, we doubled with you, what was that?
I said I'm good, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, well, everybody, thank you very much. We'll be adjourned then.